Guys, good Thursday afternoon. I'm Jerry Miller. Welcome to the I Love Seville Show. Thank you kindly for joining us. We are live in Charlottesville, the Commonwealth, the country and the world on the I Love Seville Network. It's a show that's truly dynamic and interactive, live on all social channels where you, the viewer and listener, can offer your comments, your perspective, your questions to me, our guests, our panelists, and dictate the pace and tempo of the show. Today's program is dynamite. Anytime this guy comes on the program, Jesse Rutherford, the show is just in fuego. I mean, I'm seeing Michael Hevener watching the program. He says hi from Nelson County and he's already given Jesse some props. So, jump in the mix, ask questions, relay some thoughts on air, keep them above board. We do not mind being challenged, but that challenge needs to come from a golden rule mentality standpoint. It's gotta be respectful. A couple of items I want to get out of the notebook before we welcome Jesse Rutherford to the show in about three minutes. First, we'll thank partners of the show. Scuma Boutique Dispensary has now got a second location. They opened on Elliewood Avenue to service the UVA Corner and the University of Virginia. Their first location, Rapture, next to Rapture on the Downtown Mall, just was dynamite. It crushed it. It's killing it. It's just absolutely servicing people in a very positive fashion. The second location opened on the UVA Corner on Elliewood yesterday. We love working with this family, locally owned David and Kirsty of Scuma Boutique Dispensary, the dispensary for Charlottesville and Central Virginia. We also give props to Green Berries Coffee. You can win coffee for a year, free coffee for a year from Green Berries through this link, enter greemberrys.com, enter greemberrys.com, and you get free coffee for a year potentially. Ting Fiber Internet, it's the crazy fast internet behind this network, and Scott Wagner, Scott Wagner Integrated Medicine, today's partner in spotlighting business in the community. So, items out of the notebook before we get to Jesse in 90 seconds. Yesterday, this is big, Wednesday, April 20th, yesterday, UVA Health reported zero adult inpatients with COVID-19 for the first time since patients were first admitted with the disease back in March 2020. This is, guys, two years of data and the first time in over two years, no patients, inpatients at UVA Health with COVID. That's a cause for celebration. I'm gonna throw this to Rutherford in about 60 seconds. He made this comment off air, and I was having this comment with Judah before he walked in. It's starting to feel like in Central Virginia, like it's the, the energy and the, the busyness and the positivity of 2019. This pandemic, knock on wood, behind us, in an endemic stage, and UVA Health, the barometer, indicated yesterday, no patients with COVID for the first time in over two years. Take a deep breath, digest that information, and let's give all of us in this community and applause, a sigh of relief as we move freaking forward. I will caveat this. I'm very curious to see how this pandemic is gonna be leveraged and utilized come midterm elections, and I'll leave it at that. The next topic I want to highlight is one from food and beverage, Rutherford, Jesse Rutherford, up in 45 seconds. The Chili's on Route 29 in Charlottesville, a notable building, one of the largest restaurants from a square footage standpoint in Albor County, city of Charlottesville, frankly, in Central Virginia. I catch word from friend of the program, I'm gonna call him J.O., so I'm not blowing up his spot, J.O., you know who you are, that the Chili's on Route 29 is now, this summer, gonna become a sole Korean restaurant. It makes me excited. A niche that's not necessarily filled in the community. So, the Chili's on Route 29 will become a sole Korean restaurant this summer. Now, Judah Wickhauer is our director. Nelson County, jump in the mix. Central Virginia, jump in the mix. I see a board of supervisors from Albor on the show. Let's go to the two-shot, Judah Wickhauer, director, and let's welcome Jesse Rutherford. Let's start with the, the UVA Health news. No patients with COVID?
That, what an end of, literally, an era. I can, I can think back to two years of this timeframe when I learned how to bake bread, and that was a tough time. And then, of course, you know, the countless lives that were lost and watching that tick happen, when you watch the, you know, slow the curve, remember? Flatten the curve. Flatten the curve. And you went and, what was it, like seven days, and then it was 14, then it was 30, then it was 90, whatever it was, and my gosh, what, it feels so good to be done. Just my own personal life, I remember watching my calendar being pretty healthishly full, and now here we are, finally, back to full. It went from full to empty, and two years of emptiness to now full. I, listen, I went to a concert recently, actually, right here on the Downtown Mall, for the first time in a long time.
Who'd you catch?
Modest Mouse, man. I was stoked. And so, it was truly the first concert that I had been to downtown in a long time. So, I'm probably gonna book every concert now until the end of the year, just so that I can get caught up over the two years of absence. But, man, it feels so strange. You know, masks coming off, social distancing ending, you know. Zoom is still a very integral part of life, and I, I think that's a good thing to some degree. Keeps, keeps unnecessary meetings that only last five minutes virtual, so you don't have to travel too far. But, man, it just feels so strange to finally, to hear it's zero people. End of an era.
Did you get COVID?
I did, like, multiple times.
Yeah? Multiple times legitimately?
Oh, yeah, definitely. Yeah, Delta, Omicron, you know. I didn't get the OG COVID, like, the beginning stage.
The first strain?
Yeah, I did not get the OG. I got the Delta, and then pretty sure got the Omicron, and after a while, you know, I don't know what else you can do. After you get all the boosters, social distance, but so long, so.
Do you think it's truly behind us, or do you think?
I'm gonna be hopelessly optimistic.
So, no midterm conspiracy?
Well, okay.
I think, I think midterms-
You think there's, what, you think it's gonna, like, have another rebound, jump back?
I think it's gonna be strategically positioned in the new cycle.
Ah, well, you know, that always happens. It'll accidentally happen in October, you know, as it always does. I, it, every person that I know on every political spectrum in, in Nelson County is done with COVID. Like, we did the science, we trusted the science, we got our boosters, we did the social distance. You know, sadly, some folks in our community have passed away, and I, we remember them, but at some point, life's gotta go on. And here we are, two years. My gosh, over 700 days. 700 days.
I've said this so many times on the show, coming out of COVID, the jurisdiction in Central Virginia that situated itself best out of the pandemic and managed the pandemic-
Sitting right here.
Is sitting right here.
Absolutely.
Is Nelson County. I routinely on this show sing your praises. I talk about the jurisdiction and the, the financial reserves in place.
Right.
Put in perspective the management of the pandemic, two damn years, Jesse, and how you guys have come out of this maybe stronger than ever.
Absolutely. So, and for lack of a better term, game day, when all of a sudden, you know, virtual settings was gonna be the main kind of opportunity, you walked into a budget session not knowing what to do. And so, you just sat there, you held your hands out, and you're like, oh, wow. So, how do we plan a budget cycle? How do we dream? How is it that we can plan? And that was something that was really beaten down. Of course, some of my initiatives, like revitalizing Livingston and Skyler, was very difficult to plan. It's hard to do that. You actually go straight into survival mode. Like, okay, what does Nelson County need to do to preserve our local populace and the future of our county? Nelson County was positioned in a very healthy spot in relation to our general fund budget. And we went, we looked at it, and shoot, guys, it was like the first six months, we said, no, we're gonna relieve everyone half of a year's worth of personal property. You will not have to pay personal property. And I, I'm fairly certain we were the only county, at least in this region, that had done something like that. I mean, it was a million plus dollars that we just said, no, guys, don't pay it. We don't know what this world's gonna look like. And then, kind of moving forward, like, how is it we can be fiscally responsible, but also trying to look to the future, you know? We watched as our school populations changed, as our average daily attendance dropped some. Luckily, the state offered to pay still the same amount as it did the prior year off of that prior number. But Nelson, we, we then got to a point where it's like, okay, after about a year, we said it's time to start planning life post-COVID. You know, I'm reminded of a quote that I remember reading in college, and it was, "In times of peace, prepare for war, and in times of war, prepare for peace." And we, when we started seeing that COVID was being handled with vaccines and the relief of some social distancing, they, alright, it's time to plan for the future again. With that, that, obviously, it didn't stop there. Nelson County was the first county to secure a universal internet connection in our region, in our state, and that's looking to be a reality as 40, 50% of Nelson County has access to high-speed fiber internet. Cue the people in the comments, please, on who doesn't have it yet, and we will get to you. I promise. Alright, deals were cut. Don't worry, you will get your internet. Don't worry, yeah, please get in there. I don't know your address specifically of when the installer's coming, so, you know, full disclosure.
So much I want to cover with you. We're gonna get to transportation. We'll get to short-term versus long-term rentals, and Nelson, we'll get to a sports complex in Nelson. We'll get to the fifth district congressional race, the political climate and temperature in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Vanessa Parkhill, welcome to the program. We'll highlight a couple other folks watching the show. Joshua Michael, welcome to the show. We have Grayson and Croze, welcome to the program. Live on every social media platform known to mankind. Jesse, I'm gonna throw this to you. How do you, as a jurisdictional leader, maintain fiscal conservative mentality while still trying to innovate for the future? Because some political leaders would say those are a catch-22 or work against each other.
Right. I mean, you, you obviously have some dynamic change and philosophy change, generation to generation. I know for my level, you know, I'm a conservative Republican without a doubt, and that's, obviously, that can be contentious depending on which sect of conservatism you might sit in. But the reality is, you can't get internet done unless you have a public partner partnership, you know. With the expectation that corporate America is gonna come crawling into Nelson County without major subsidy, is not gonna exist, because the economy as a scale never existed. Great comparison, electricity. There was no opportunity, there was electricity in Nelson County. Appalachian Power provided electricity to much of the most populated areas in Nelson County, but they didn't go after the last mile, the farmer who lives at the very back of a valley. You know, so many of those particular areas, you know, suffered. So, you have to look at it with the lens of, hey, whatever corporation, and in this case, it's essentially a nonprofit. I mean, cooperatives, Central Virginia Election Cooperative, and Firefly is a nonprofit to an extent. It's ultimately, the ownership is the membership of those entities. So, we have a great relationship with them, and when they were talking about game day, like, hey, what do you think of this? We were all in. Like, as soon as the conversation, actually, the conversation didn't even had to be said, because Nelson County said, when you're ready, we're in, no matter what. And props to Gary Wood. He's definitely been a revolutionary and a very key part in progressing Nelson County into the 22nd century. I mean, we got gigabyte speed for 79.99. I mean, in what, in we, that's so far into the future of need that, oh, my gosh.
That's huge.
I mean, one gig of speed, like, the things you could do. You could run all your terminal services, VoIP phone, you can do everything. And probably, you know, if you have security cameras, have it streaming 4K live, you know, with no buffer. That's what we have in Nelson County. And over COVID, we said, the number one priority we have is making sure the Silk Road, that opportunity is brought to every single home in Nelson County. We will be number one. We will be first. And of course, again, cue the people in the comments who don't have it yet. You will get it, I promise.
How about, how about Livingston update for viewers and listeners?
Yes, absolutely, Livingston. So, when we're talking about revitalization, you know, we've applied for multiple different grants, grants and trying to get, you know, brick facade, trying to get lighting and all that. We've, some were successful, some were not. As we're coming out of COVID, the, taking things away from infrastructure, for example, internet was a huge dollar amount, both federally, statewide, and making sure that that was number one. And it makes sense. That is a priority. So, hopefully, we have a couple other grant opportunities. At some point, I will ask the local government itself to make the contribution. It's not a small number, you know, trying to do revitalization of a town is, you know, several million dollars. And, you know, I don't want to sit here and ask to take taxpayer dollars if there's some free monies out there that can complement it. So, hopefully, we'll have a better update in the next, you know, four to six months.
Here's a, a good comment. You'll find this hilarious. This is from David on our I Love Seville. He said, "Last time you were in a Star Hill hat. Can Jesse show us which hat he's wearing right now?"
So, this was actually deliberate?
Okay, as you saw last night-
I have to say, I got pretty pressured at, when I went to Blue Mountain last, which is like, probably my secondary watering hole after Woodridge, and I was gifted a Blue Mountain hat when I, upon my entry. And so, now I figured, you know, I better make sure I wear the right hat today.
He's wearing a Blue Mountain hat for all those that are watching.
Again, great beer at Star Hill. I'm not gonna criticize that. Pro Nelson County every day. I also accept hats, so he who has a hat, I will take it.
Dude, it's so funny that people are remembering the hats that you're wearing right now.
You know, it's a nice hat. It's a great hat.
You look sharp. You always wear a hat. Alright, let's talk transportation. So, this question's come in before, so we talked yesterday about some transportation. We talk about it often. We had, is it Ted Reich? Is that his name?
Sounds about right.
Ted Reek? Okay, Ted Reek, thank you very much. Judah Wickhauer keeps us in line. He is the, he's a public transport expert, and he's come on this program. And, and Mr. Ted Reich is the Chief Executive Officer of JOT. And we talked with him about a unifying brand in Central Virginia called the Central Virginia Transportation System. And the brand is, you know, not relevant, but the concept of one transportation umbrella or brand for the entire region was like, that's the idea. He's like, this is what we should do here. You follow transportation, you're a member of a lot of different commissions. Talk to us anywhere you want to go on transportation.
So, I know you mentioned it to me before the show started, and a thought hit me. Centralized transportation is not a unique concept to this area. Thinking about the Skyler, Ivy, and Afton areas, and a lot of Nelson County, I mean, before it had, you know, healthy interstates, it was a deep train depot town. So, a lot of the workforce going in Skyler was being brought in from Albemarle via train and whatever other methods that may have existed at that time. I don't think it's beyond reason. I think you had some philosophy change probably in that 19, when the end of the train depot world and, and interstates became very effective. The gas was cheap, cars were cheap, where like, everyone gets their own car, they go to work when they want, leave when they want. I don't think it's unreasonable with today's world how we can service metropolis areas like Charlottesville, Albemarle's, Urban Ring, you know, Waynesboro, that, the draft area, as well as Lynchburg. Because at the end of the day, Nelson County services those three metropolis areas for labor. My grandfather worked at DuPont in Waynesboro. He rode, he carpooled to work almost every day with the same five guys for like 20, 30 years. That's the same thing. We were talking about Central Virginia Transport, like, that's what they did. One drove one week, another drove another week, and so everyone pretty much knew how to get to and from work that way. I don't think it's unreasonable. I think the, the question comes down to is, how do you target it? Obviously, you can target, JOT does a great job of targeting very generic work areas, health, you know, especially, you know, if you get a doctor's visit, making sure that works out. But, a very key piece, and as, you know, we change energy methods going from, you know, combustible engines to electric engines, and when internet's going to your house, you have less reason to leave your house other than to procure your, whatever you need for your household and take kids to and from school, you know. It's gonna be interesting. I, I think that there is a huge piece there, and if it's not for just the normal day resident of Nelson, Fluvana, Buckingham, whoever it might be, it could be third-party suppliers. Like, you know, I, I think the one thing I learned over COVID was, I hate grocery shopping. I really do. It's actually, one of the bane's of my existence is trying to figure out what I need, and then forgetting two of the items that I did as opposed to making a list on Amazon's pantry, and then all of a sudden, it's at my house two days later, you know. So, how is it that can look? I think there's a huge opportunity.
Blue Mountain Brewery is watching.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
I need a new hat.
Lisa Davis, the event coordinator at Blue Mountain, is, is saying, "Full Nelson for you next time." Thank you for wearing the hat, from Lisa Davis. You're getting props right now from a number of people, including Gary or Jerry Catalano, watching the show. Questions are coming in on LinkedIn, via Twitter DM, YouTube, and on Spotify and iTunes. We will get to all of them here. Let's talk transportation for me first, though. You know, I, this area, and it spilled over to Nelson, is getting so freaking expensive to live. The common denominator of creating affordability, one of the common denominators, one of them is fiber and broadband for all. Another common denominator would be transportation. And for folks that are now getting pushed, gentrified, encouraged to live in outer jurisdictions like, say, Buckingham County, having a, a transportation system that can get them to and from the epicenter of employment Charlottesville reliably is more important than ever. It doesn't exist now. What would prevent all these splintered transportation brands and infrastructures of unifying under one umbrella and, and servicing a region?
Right. You know, I, I don't necessarily think there's, there's been so many barriers. I mean, a lot of those organizations are pulling from the same pots of money. You know, a lot of it's federal dollars. You know, they look at it like, hey, these guys are servicing X number of people, or this is X number of miles that they travel, or this is, you know, whatever, however they quantify getting their resources. It would be a wonderful concept, you know. I think there'd be some politics to overcome, that's for sure. There's always politics that exists in-
What, the joint venture nature?
Yeah, yeah. There would definitely be some politics in there, you know, having to overcome certain circumstances. Obviously, JOT's on the up and up as of recently, which is great news, but, you know, it wasn't always that way. So, there, there was some struggle and some heartache that existed at that time. So, we probably need to overcome a little bit of that, but there needs to be a regional conversation of how to do that, because if you expect, you know, people to be servicing your metropolis areas, you better be hoping that you're figuring out in the areas that people who can't afford to live here are able to come here and participate in the labor market. Okay, having a car is expensive. Having a car makes and determines whether you're paying rent in a month. And if your car breaks down and you're making, let's just say, the new, new minimum wage of $15 an hour or $20 an hour, well, you know, in today's world, your used car went up in value, parts are worse, and trying to get a towed and all you got is $1,000 in your checking account, it puts you in a really tough predicament. Before you know it, you didn't go to work for a week because your car was broke. Now, you lost your job. Now, you're getting, your, your electric's getting turned off, then you're being evicted. Guess what? You're homeless now. And that's an unfortunate circumstance. Now, at the same time, we have to look at this pragmatically, make sure that you're living somewhere that you can have a support system that enables you to continue to work there. We can't necessarily always count on being able to drive an hour to work every day, but at the same time, we as a society have a duty to make sure that, you know, our businesses that are really undermanned. Like, we have, I mean, how many, I'm sure every restaurant in the Downtown Mall has a for hire sign. Am I accurate in saying that?
Yeah, 100%.
I mean, every hospital is ready to hire hundreds or dozens of CNAs, every nursing home. So, guess what? At some point, we're gonna have to start looking at corporations saying, hey, they're lit, they live here, we can get these folks, this particular certification, and we're gonna drive them from Livingston to UVA. I mean, UVA is a huge hub for employment, you know, but, and I'm sure, certain they would love to participate.
What does Nelson do, two-part question. What is Nelson's top employer? Is it, is it the Nelson County jurisdiction?
It's probably the government, and then after that, Wintergreen. And if not, it's Wintergreen, then the government. I think I've seen it go both directions.
Then the second part of the question, what does Nelson do to drive economic development from a new job standpoint and employer recruitment standpoint?
Absolutely. One piece that I always like to head off on that conversation, I don't like, depending on the government, to be the job hub. That is a dangerous precedent to set.
Why do you say that?
Because the only way you get a job hub out of the government is by taxing the taxpayer. However, with a corporation that comes in, our new business, you're not expecting the taxpayer all, to necessarily have to pay more taxes to support that new business in there. He's created a new model, a new business, to create new resources that don't cost us money.
Got it.
So, that's not to say that I don't support our local government and make sure everybody's paid properly, but I always look at it from the lens of, how is it that we can bring in new business to Nelson County, create new jobs, and how is it we can bring bodies willing to fill those jobs? And that, it's actually kind of a little complicated of a, the thought process, because to bring in a new business, our new whatever job, you have to have somebody there to fill it, right? If you don't have people to fill the job, then job creation is pointless. Nelson County, we have a very difficult time in the hospitality world of filling jobs. Now, some people say it's a wage issue, sure, that might play a piece in it. Ultimately, it's a bodies issue, because I have gone to and from all over 151 and our service areas, and they're willing to pay top dollar. Like, when I say top dollar, like, I have heard of bartenders walking out of certain places making like, two, $1,000 to $1,500 on a Friday. So, okay, let's exit that. So, then it's just, where are people willing to travel to work here? They're coming from Stanton. They're coming from Augusta. They're coming from Charlottesville and Albemarle. Believe it or not, there are people in Charlottesville and Albemarle who will come and service our hospitality world, Stanton especially. So, how do we overcome that? And that kind of gets into, you know, housing, of course, which is one niche that I have in my own personal life, but also one that we deal with all the time as a local government in a regional basis. So, job creation, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? Do you have somebody who shows there, says, hey, I need 400 jobs? Well, it's kind of hard to fill those when you ain't got the bodies.
We talk about a sports complex on this show often.
Sure.
An update on Nelson County's efforts with a potential, is this an accurate description?
Oh, yeah.
Regional sports complex?
Well, I mean, you're welcome to come, but it is Nelson County.
Talk, talk to us about that.
So, we're, we're currently in the, not discovery, but planning stages of doing a sports facility. It's really rec facility is what we prefer to do it, because it's gonna have a wider sphere of not only baseball, football, probably gym, but swimming is gonna be a huge piece. Indoor swimming pool is something that's been of the eye of the board for going on over a decade, and this is gonna be a year where we are fiscally postured to have a facility like that. So, we are within, we're talking months, of finally making an announcement and dollar numbers of what it's potentially gonna look at. There's some stuff that's currently in closed session that I can't disclose yet, but we are within a time period of making some specific announcements soon.
So, the complex, would it have the infrastructure to accommodate regional tournaments? Are we thinking specifically for locals?
Yeah, for, it's definitely locals first. It will cater to the local, not just children, but also adults. And one thing that we've seen across the Commonwealth that these facilities can help with is your aging demographics, having facilities available to them that aren't necessarily, they have to pay, go to a physical trainer and all that, where they can do it on their own, especially the swimming aspect is a huge piece. But I, myself, not speaking for the board, have an eye on sports tourism. I think there is a huge opportunity in Nelson County to be the sports hub of Virginia. And how is it that we talk about getting bodies is creating an attractive venue that people are like, you know what, I want my kid to go learn how to play soccer there. I want my kid to be a football player there, because not only do they have a great high, high school team, whatever that might mean, they have a great training program to get them there in a safe, healthy manner. One of the biggest barriers to having good sports teams is access to facilities and resources. I mean, you could look across the Commonwealth, and, you know, that's a huge lack. Now, I think we as Nelson County can posture ourselves to be, you know, a top contender. And of course, some of the, the sport aspect of that does take generations of, you know, training and making sure everybody's getting to a, a good, good performance level, but, you know, it's, the time is now. And, you know, also making sure that there's opportunity for our younger demographics to have something to do, you know. Of course, that's a huge complaint in our community, is what do young people have to do?
Locally?
Yes. Now, growing up, for me, I was out in the woods and fishing and swimming in the creeks and the rivers and all that, but not necessarily. Everybody has that opportunity. So, how is it we can have something that complements our academic system and can go throughout the day? And then one other piece I want to add to this is childcare. This rec facility, it has also been the goal to how we can offer childcare in Nelson County. As you know, as many people in rural Virginia know, it's difficult to have, if you, alright, for example, Nelson County, it's pretty simple for me. My family goes back a long time. My mama's family goes back hundreds of years, right?
In Nelson?
In Nelson County. I got- In Nelson County. I got dozens and dozens of cousins. There's some of them on there liking this and you cussing me as I speak probably, but the thing is, if I had a kid, my, I always had a babysitter, whether that was aunt, uncle, grandparent, you know, let's just say my mom got sick. You know, I had a relative down the street that, you know, opened arms, hey, drop Jesse off. If you're new to Nelson County, that doesn't exist necessarily. So how is it that there is an opportunity for, let's just say, your, your wife or your husband or whatever that you're working dynamic might meet be. The wife's like, you know what? I, I really need to go, I'm a doctor. I need to go put in a couple days here for whatever that occupation is. Well, but I don't have anywhere to drop my kid off and I don't want to drive my kid all the way to Charlottesville to a facility over there, because then my kids, whatever. So Nelson County needs that opportunity. How is it we can facilitate that? Similar to internet, you know? I think there's a public, private, nonprofit partnership that can exist where Nelson County is producing a facility, but it's self-sustaining.
Does it exist now?
Yes. So there are examples of this. Uh YMCA is a good example.
Okay.
Uh, I've seen it, I think in Bedford, Lynchburg, Roanoke and a few other areas. Some I don't necessarily like their model uh without having to get into too much detail, but each one has had intermittent pieces of that, how the YMCA has been able to contribute to rural communities. Uh, but also be relatively self-sustaining. And that's job creation too.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. It's um, it's a positive snowball effect there.
Yeah.
Irma Sue Harris.
My cousin.
Thank you. You, you said cousin. I wanted to bring that up. Thank you, Jesse, for all you have done for our county. We are blessed to have you on our board. How many cousins you got in Nelson?
Oh, hundreds.
Yeah?
Probably.
And, and you mentioned uh Jesse Rutherford and children.
I don't have any children.
Okay.
No, don't worry, we're good. Don't worry, we're good. But hypothetical.
Good hypothetical right there. Um, how about uh short-term versus long-term rentals? Before we, you know, go deep into this, and it's a hot topic.
Oh, is it?
Very much a hot topic in Charlottesville, Alamo County. We should define short-term and long-term rentals.
Sure. Um, let's go with the, what legally it is.
Yeah.
Typically, anyone staying longer than thirty days is considered a long-term tenant.
Right.
That's very basic. Like, there's definitely changes with that. You have campgrounds, there's different rules. But just for simplicity of this conversation, let's imagine a long-term rental, anyone who is staying longer than thirty days at one place.
Okay.
And a short-term rental, anyone staying less than thirty days and doesn't have any place with the landlord-tenant act necessarily.
Okay.
But is being treated as transient occupancy.
So that's the definition.
Yeah.
Short-term rentals in regards to Nelson County.
Right. So as many people know, Nelson County has a very healthy short-term market, uh fairly large. Uh, if, uh, some of my sources that I've checked, if you go on airDNA.com, um, and you only get the chance to like search two or three times, because then it'll make you pay for it. You type in Nellis Ford, Virginia, you will find that there is about five hundred short-term rentals from the top of Wintergreen Mountain and this very specifically drawn area of Nellis Ford. It's amazingly huge. Uh, add in Afton, you're getting another fifty. Add in Shipman and Fawver, Roseland, you're getting another hundred. So by the time you're done, I think I did a rough off of a website that I believe is accurate seventy percent of the time. You're getting like, Nelson County has like six hundred fifty, seven hundred Airbnbs, short-term rentals. Let's just go simple like that, short-term rentals.
That's a lot.
Uh, it's massive.
Yeah.
That is a mass. Now, keep in mind, Wintergreen, Stony Creek, the area was designed for that kind of concept.
Sure.
Like it wasn't designed for necessarily a, a long-term stay in a condo at the very top of the mountain, which you could, just be a little difficult of a lifestyle. Um, beyond that area, it's probably only another fifty to a hundred and fifty uh outside of the Nellis Ford, Afton area. Cross Skyler, Gladstone, Arrington, Shipman, uh Roseland and Tyro. So uh it's a huge market. Not a lot of counties don't necessarily have that level of uh short-term stays, which, you know, creates an, a uh interesting opposition.
A dynamic.
A dynamic that is a little bit complex.
So what's the beef?
So one of the biggest struggles that you have, uh, one is transients. A lot of folks have a difficult time and some of it's very understanding. I mean, I, I don't necessarily live beside a short-term rental, but you know, having, let's just say a frat party shows up at your house next door at Friday, you know? And then they stay all weekend and they've destroyed the house. There've been music all night, blah, blah, blah. It's a very frustrating dynamic for some people, especially in situations where proximity is close. Um, that exists. Obviously, the interest of long-term rentals is a huge conversation piece. So there's also a big belief that if there was a limit on the number of short-term rentals or whatever kind of level of restrictions might exist, that there would be more long-term rentals, which would offset the cost of rental properties in Nelson County. That is another philosophy that.
So long-term rentals, if we, if we, see, I don't buy that.
Right.
And this is, this is maybe me talking, um, not Jesse, maybe you wanna agree with this or not. If you limit Airbnbs, VRBOs or short-term rentals thirty days or less, then you're gonna get more people signing one-year leases or six-month leases?
That's.
I don't buy that correlation.
Right.
Do you buy that cor-? We're both landlords.
Yeah, I, I don't necess, I don't agree with that.
Because the short-term tenant, the short-term rental is here to have some fun and leave.
Yes. Uh, well, and let's just look at it from the owner's perspective, you know? Your average long-term rental person in Nelson County is not necessarily Jesse Rutherford. It's grandma, granddad who got uncle's house because uncle's dead, and it's a double wide, right? That's probably always gonna be a long-term rental. Your short-term rentals in Nelson County are really targeted in the 151 era.
Sure.
Right? You can't look at Stony Creek and say to yourself, oh, this was gonna be an affordable home, ever. No, that seven thousand square foot mansion was either gonna be empty or he's gonna monopolize on this new economy of short-term stays, which contribute a very sizable dollar amount to Nelson County. I mean, we're talking millions of dollars. Um.
This is slam dunk.
Yeah. So you, I, I often do, I do reject the idea that by limiting the number of short-term rentals that you would have more long-term rentals, because you gotta keep in mind, a short-term rental performs more often than not, three times better than a long-term rental.
For the jurisdiction?
Not for the jurisdiction, for the owner.
For the owner.
Think about it like this. You go, if you wanna have a long-term rental and you wanna be within market, let's just say your target amount's fifteen hundred a month, right? Well, fifteen hundred dollars a month is like a serious not-large number to where you need to pay your taxes, your insurance and the mortgage on that property. Short-term rental, if you're, let's just say you're getting a fifteen hundred long-term, short-term, you're probably gonna be getting thirty, let's just say thirty-five hundred.
Your profit margin is better.
So much better.
Yeah, but I would bet it, it performs even better than three X for the jurisdiction.
Especially in certain corridors.
Yeah.
Doubt. Absolutely no doubt. Now, one benefit of a short-term rental versus long-term rental, you do, we do get sizable dollar figures from that. So for example, currently, the rule is five percent. So, okay.
For short?
For a short-term rental.
Okay.
That number's about to go to potentially ten percent. And guess what? That ten percent is going hope, straight to the schools.
So the ten percent off the top on the short-term rental, plus the meals tax.
Plus the meals tax, plus sales tax, plus whatever other tax a transient's paying in a timeframe. I mean, Nelson County also has millions of dollars in meals and lot, meals tax that we bring in. Keep in mind.
Then they leave.
And then they leave.
Yeah.
And then they leave.
Dude, this is so obvious.
Yeah, so.
What's with the opposition?
Well, the opposition, you know, is how is it that you can make sure that your relative is being able to stay in Nelson County? And I sympathize with that person. Like, that's a serious thing. Like, how is it that housing can exist for your friends and family to live in an area that they've always lived in, um, but to also to bring in new families? Um, you have to start looking at it from the regula, regulatory side of it, like is our zoning up to par to where density can exist? Uh, which is another piece that a lot of people have issues with, the word density. You know this. Most other real estate agents, developers know this. You can't have the word affordable without the word density.
Yeah.
You cannot have the expectation that someone can procure X number of whatever acres and then on the backside of that, have it extremely subsidized. And that that guy's making money. No. And if you expect the government to do it, Nelson County, hey, I think we can support it in certain areas. First, I say we fix the regulatory zoning aspect, but we're not gonna still be able to fix the problem. We're totally dependent, just like fiber internet. Nelson County couldn't fix that problem ourselves. I would actually argue, every single county could have partnered up just ourselves without the Firefly, C-Vet conversation. And it, we would still be decades behind what Firefly has been able to accomplish as a corporation. Now, we've helped them expedite astronomically with the millions of dollars of contribution. But our million-dollar contribution to do what they have done would cost ten million dollars. The same conversation can be used with housing. So you can't have the expectation that the county's gonna be able to build X number of facilities. You have to be looking to these for-profit and some, maybe some nonprofit quasi-government partnerships to make it happen. But first, you have to look at the zoning side of it. Are we allowing enough multifamily for density so that people aren't paying fourteen hundred dollars a month for a rental? That's expensive, but when you buy a single-family home in Nelson County on three acres, that house is gonna cost you two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. What's your mortgage payment and interest on that? Okay, you're already at like fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars and you can't afford fifteen hundred. Well, okay. Somehow that dollar number needs to get down to like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That scenario doesn't exist in Nelson County. So, you know, when you look at the short-term rental and the long-term rental, oh, and by the way, having a long-term rental tenant, they have, there's a lot of rights there, as they deserve, but with a short-term tenant, they get evicted essentially every three days. When they rent there on Friday, they're leaving on Sunday, right? You know, if you have a tenant there that's not paying money, I can't blame a lot of people on 151. They're like, this is just a lot of work. I'm not getting paid. I can't even cover my mortgage. I can't even cover my insurance and taxes. I rather this have be an, have, be a short-term rental.
Um, comments coming in fast and furious. Danny O'Day, um Politico, fantastic interview. Jesse is clearly thoughtful and an intelligent guy, really enjoying his insights. He adds, "The opposition is that you talk all the time about a massive lack of inventory of affordable housing and when landlords with dollar signs in their eyes see short-term rentals as a way to make more cash, every house they earmark for short-term renting is a house a family does not get to rent to live in the community they want to live in."
Sure.
And you touched on that.
I, I did, and I wanna add to that real quick. Not necessarily. I mean, again, if there's seven hundred air, short-term rentals in Nelson County and six of them are centered in Stony Creek and Wintergreen, those homes were never going to be rented affordably.
Yeah.
And if rented at all. Either they were gonna monopolize on an economic opportunity or it was gonna be empty. Now, I'm the kind of free-market guy that says, hey, you got something that you could work to make a dollar. Well, guess what? And you're contributing to Nelson County itself. I mean, listen, for the record, Nelson County was able this year and we're about to have a, a, a public uh hearing on our tax rate, we're lowering our real estate tax to the local person.
So jealous.
We're lowering it from seventy-two cents to sixty-five cents. We have fully equalized our personal property tax. I think it was three dollars and forty-five cents to, don't quote me, it's like two dollars and sixty-some cents.
Equalizing.
Equalize means, so, and this isn't, this is always a tough description for folks. Let's just say you paid a hundred dollars for your Oldsmobile in spring of twenty nineteen. The value of your Oldsmobile by some miracle went up, because you know, in that scenario, two, three hundred percent, right? All right, that means you have to pay, let's just say, a hundred and seventy-five doll, or three hundred dollars now, that half of the year. It was our goal. Now, it won't be exactly what it was in twenty nineteen, because the value went up. It was our goal to try to lower how much you'd have to pay by taking it from three forty-five to two sixty-seven. So you're not gonna be exactly a hundred dollars, but you're not gonna be the three hundred dollars if we didn't change the rate.
Jesse, that, that was perfect.
Yeah.
You explain it well every time. We have a, um, so he kills it. Anytime where he's on the show, the show flies. It's one seventeen. I just looked at the clock for the first time. J-Dubs, we have a one-thirty conference call. Okay, so keep me on point for one-thirty PM conference call here. Um, we have twelve minutes I wanna cover with you and a lot I wanna get to. Devin Combs, Cooms?
Yeah.
So proud of you, Jesse Rutherford, with the heart emojis flying everywhere for uh, for, for JR.
Be a sign of you.
Um, let's talk, question for me, and then I'm gonna talk political temperature in Virginia in fifth district congressional race. Here's the question from me first.
Sure.
Which part of Nelson County are you so proud of and bullish of for the short-term and long-term future? Whether it's the Livingston.
Sure.
Enhancements, anywhere in Nelson. Which part of Nelson County do you think is underachieving?
Right.
And needs improvement and attention?
Uh, I, I think obviously, uh, the diamond in the rough for me is absolutely Skyler. You know, you're talking about a, a town that has such a unique perspective and an affordable inventory that exists. And when it gets fiber internet and it gets the wastewater upgrade, that place is gonna be a huge opportunity for a lot of different people. Whether that's a family or whether that's gonna be a lower-income fam, especially lower-income.
Cause you're talking price point.
We're talking price work. It is a underpriced market.
Okay.
And that, that area, it once was a huge thriving community. Since the loss of an extraction-based business of Soapstone, it's not necessarily what it used to be. But that is a diamond in the rough that people aren't watching right now. I also am hopeful for the Livingston area, but specifically the twenty-nine corridor. There is gonna be a huge opportunity and there is appetite probably politically by our board.
So that's Woodridge to Livingston?
Uh, that would.
To the snow, to the ice cream cone?
Pretty much. I would say draw a line from Route Six, like you head towards Scottsville, draw it all the way to Livingston and even beyond.
Okay.
You know, your most developable land in Nelson County is south of Livingston. I'm thinking, hey, that's a great opportunity for a suburb, for a subdivision, for a place for families to live. And then also still have the convenience of twenty-nine and working in two metropolis areas of Livingston and Charlottesville.
Good take. Um, Bob Good, fifth congressional district. Um, a gentleman, a politician, Bob Good, that has, either you're really in his corner or you're vehemently opposed.
Right.
He's running for reelection. His opposition, Josh Throneberg, from Charlottesville.
Right.
Your take on the fifth?
Sure. Um, in full disclosure, I'm actually vice chair of the fifth district uh for this particular zone. You know, the fifth district, it has such a unique uh posturing of political ideologies. You know, there's definitely, as does the left side of the conversation, have multiple different sects, like a Charlottesville Democrat is very different than a Fluvana Democrat, than it is different than a Halifax or Charlotte County Democrat. Um, in that same complexity exists with Republicans, I think the big difference is in the fifth district, the fifth district's gonna be like sixty-five percent conservative. Uh, Bob Good will likely win his convention, probably handedly. And he will ultimately win the uh general election, probably sixty-five to thirty-five percent. Um, you know, of course, I'm always, I always believe everyone should always be challenged at any time.
Same.
But at the same time, there are some realities that, you know, we in the political sphere kind of have to admit to ourselves and the left Democrat has been extremely disconnected from the fifth district reality. Um, you know, you look at Southside, Virginia, you know, there was once upon a time a Democrat area, you know, a lot of people call those blue dog Democrats. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the term. Uh, and after decades of supporting blue dogs and folks realize they still got nothing, they're still poor. Now they have meth addictions and all sorts of other drug issues and access to facilities that they're like, well, y'all did nothing. What ma, what makes you think you're gonna do something different now? You know, and then of course, so many other, uh, so many other heartburns exist in today's society, some legitimate, some that are just conspiracy, but you know, at the temperature of the fifth district is it's red. And it's not just red, it's bleeding like red.
Are you surprised with the candidate, the Dems trotted out?
I'm not.
We got an entrepreneur, a minister, um, I don't wanna say. Name recognition? I'm not sure it's there.
Definitely not. I mean, I.
As in years past, certainly, races past.
Sure, sure. I mean, I, I'm from Nelson County, so I'd have a little bit more proximity and I'm in the political know and I have no idea who he is.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, like I have absolutely no idea who he is. I'm sure he's a nice guy. I mean, you know, I'm not gonna go out in that way.
Is that a sign of giving up on the race?
Uh, I don't necessarily know. I, the Democrats have been renowned in Virginia to challenge every race ever, which politically that is a solid strategy, because it distracts and detracts incumbents from being able to participate in races that are necessarily, you know, winnable. Um, uh, you know, I'm sure, I can't wait to get, see what the comments say about this, but he, the guy, uh, he doesn't have a chance. I mean, it's, this district is like not just red, it's bleeding red. It's not Tom Periello blue. Like, that era was different. Tom Periello was like an NRA-endorsed Democrat. And he had an appeal which was familiar to blue dogs. They're like, this is my granddad's Democrat, who's a shotgun-toting, you know, liberal. And that dynamic just, especially in the national situation we have right now with inflation, Joe Biden, Afghanistan, Ukraine, like the appetite. My friends who are, uh, listen, I have a wonderful spectrum of friends across all political ideologies and I'm grateful for everyone. They're not inspired this election cycle. They're, I have not seen any inspiration at all.
Um, Lisa says, "Very excited for the twenty-nine quarter developing more soon."
Sure.
Um, four and a half minutes left. I've never, you know, I've been following this fairly closely for a couple decades here. And, and we have some fans walking into the program here. Um, I have not seen in the couple decades that I followed, um, politics in Virginia. I have not seen in the couple decades that I followed, politics in Virginia, I have not seen the pendulum swing so far from one direction to another.
Oh, yeah.
Um, we saw that last year with the governor's race, we talked about this.
Right.
I've said on this program for the last 60 to 90 days, certainly most of Q1, that inflation is going to be the talking point for midterms this year. I've said that inflation and, and, and the talk, the last, the lack of disposable income for homes across the country is going to be potentially a springboard for conservatives at midterms.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I think we're going to see a lot of folks either surprised or angry or disenchanted or happy with what happens this fall, and I think it's going to be a, a sweep of red.
It's going to be so red.
Yeah.
Like, I.
That's a Virginia temperature topic here.
That, that is, and remember, the saying goes, how Virginia goes, so does the country.
Right.
We are a flippable state. We can go with whatever, whoever's president if we believed in him. Yonkin's victory was very indicative of a frustrated, and this is not even just right people, this is like independents. They were so done with so many of the things that was going on in Virginia at that time and laws and changes that you had that huge rebuttal. I, nationally, I mean, you're going to see a huge red wave. I mean, effectively, the president has, you know, failed in so many different respects of, you know, how is it we can contain inflation? How is it that we could have exited Afghanistan different? Ukraine is going to be a huge talking point, and who knows what resorts Russia's going to be willing to do between here and there, you know, in November? So, you know, it's.
So you don't even see the pandemic is coming up again?
I, I'm pandemic-done.
Yeah.
Like, I, for me, it wouldn't impact me necessarily again. It still affects my supply chain of life, but I don't really see the pand- I mean, I don't know.
Not from a politics standpoint?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how they could arm it again. I mean, we're going on two years, it's hard to ride something like that for two years after you got four vaccines, two boosters, and there'll probably be a fifth one by the time we get to the fall and it's like the flu shot.
Yeah, that's what I think is going to, so what are the top three topics? Ukraine, inflation?
Ukraine, inflation, um, supply chains, uh, you know, I, well, I guess that goes with inflation too. Um, I just, dude, if you just stuck.
Volatility in the economy?
We could, we could see a bit, a big drop in that, but, you know, I don't know. I think that would be an interesting piece to see what happens. Shoot, gas prices, you could put that as your top three right there with inflation. People will, you know, make very big decisions on their life based off of how much it costs them at the pump.
Folks are saying on the feed, schools. Schools were certainly a part of Yonkin-McCollum.
Sure.
Oh, we passed the schools piece. I mean, in the schools piece, you have.
The huge piece, that was COVID though.
Yeah. Well, you also had, um.
You, you had the.
Critical race theory.
The bathroom conversation.
Yeah, you also had transgender and you also had empowering parents.
Right.
All those were a part of schools.
Well, yeah, when, when McCollum made the sit, the comments that.
Three times.
Parents don't have a say in their children's education.
He said that three times.
Yeah, yeah.
He lost because of that.
Oh, that, he, if he wasn't going to lose, he definitely lost another like 3% of Virginians right at that moment. Because it doesn't matter if you're a left-wing person, right-wing person, independent, no, you have a say in what happens to your child.
Tammy says, she's putting on your page over here, that Tammy Burnley, that should be domestic oil production, open up a pipeline. You want to touch that?
Yeah, that's obviously a familiar thing in Nelson County.
Yeah.
Pipelines, uh, you know, I, I've always been a advocate of pretty much all energy, you know? I think there's a place for all of it. My father, we installed 50, 60 solar panels on his house. We're proud renewable energy folks. We also understand the barrier to entry with that.[1602.83]